I'm very happy that nowhere in my report does it say "Super Summer Student Pass", and I won't have to repeat that over and over and over until I get cross-threaded. So the intent of this report is to introduce the proposed amendments to Traffic Bylaw 5717. I'd like to touch base on the Safe Routes to School project, speed reduction, and then go through, in summary, the remaining traffic bylaw changes. I'd like to thank Staff Sergeant Cam Lewis, who's here to answer any questions on behalf of Moose Jaw Police Services as well. A big thanks to Director Svensson for working with Kristi Jory on the bylaw changes. And thank you for Mr. Erickson, the manager of Engineering Services, for joining us today as well. With respect to the background, the bylaw has been in discussion between Public Works and the city solicitor for some time, primarily trying to address gaps in our permitting processes, removing obscure permits from the bylaw, addressing gaps in the permitting process, different attempts to gain clarity around keeping our roadways safe and free of obstructions, and some of these types of efforts. At the same time, through the work of the Transportation Master Plan, we became aware and interested to see that we were behind the times on the 30-kilometer-an-hour speed reduction. And with those recommendations from the consultant, we put those changes ahead as a part of the traffic bylaw. Since our last report in April, what we have done is present the bylaw changes to ACAC and the PWIEC. Both committees endorsed the bylaw changes and provided feedback, which is attached in Attachment C as well. We did verify the work provided to us by KGS on the speed reductions of the 14 other cities in the province above 5,000. So throughout the month of April and into May, we had discussions and meetings with all 14 municipalities. We did, in fact, confirm that they are reduced to 30 kilometers an hour. The Safe Routes to School project is estimated to cost $500,000, with $300,000 coming from our sidewalks and $200,000 coming from traffic control. That's money that's within approved funds for this year. Between the changes to the bylaw and the construction work, what we will see prior to the start of school in September is standardized signage, defined school zones, clarity around no-stopping and U-turns, reduced speeds, simplifying language to allow for enforcement, and overall, increased safety at our schools. So the changeover to signs will occur in the summer of this year. And as those signs go up, they will be live and active if the bylaw does pass. So the bylaw will read 30 kilometers an hour unless otherwise posted. So if we are to advance this bylaw, that construction will put the 30K signs up, and they will be live after crews have left the site. From discussions with Moose Jaw Police Service in April, they've indicated that there will be a grace period, a period where they do warnings and instructions about school zone infractions. But at their discretion, there will be a grace period. Our next steps from the bylaw in terms of communications is to partner with our communications team and issue ongoing PSAs jointly with police service, both updating on construction and then commissioning and bringing these signs live, and then following through on behalf of Moose Jaw Police or working with police about the grace period and enforcement and how that will roll out to the community. A final comment on speed reduction. The intent with this project is to grab, clearly identify the existing school zones, delineate them with a clean start and a clean end, and update the signs within those school zones. So what we're not doing at this time is a traffic warrant of other locations that may or may not see speed reductions. Those are conversations administration would welcome. However, this project is focused on improving safety at school zones. So the proposed bylaw amendment is Attachment A, and then potentially helpful is Attachment F, which is the previous bylaw with track changes. That's the document that I found most useful. It gives context as to what's being replaced and what's going in. And then those changes are summarized in the report on pages five and six. I won't read through the summary of the changes, but the intent of the changes is to bring clarity through the definition section, through changes to language, bring clarity to the bylaw, bring consistency and enforceability to the bylaw with language around no-stopping, clearing up the differences between no-stopping and no-parking, defining no-U-turns within school zones, streamlining operational practices. And then it's about giving administration tools. So we are connecting, we are updating the fines sections and connecting them to the bylaw changes. We're removing the reference for traffic warrants. While traffic warrants are a valuable tool for engineering, they are one of several things that we can do as engineers to put forward recommendations to council. So that specific reference to certain traffic warrants actually attached to the bylaw, we've removed that. There's a section with obsolete permits that are no longer in practice. We've removed that as well. So an update on the schedules. So that is a rundown of the traffic bylaw changes. Brief summary as well, an update on the associated construction project that has latched on to this change. So if there's any questions between myself and Mr. Erickson, representing the Safe Routes to School project as well. Ms. Jory, for the operational changes, we'd be happy to answer.
Counsel Logan.
Thank you, Chair. Question through you to administration. So, if I'm reading this correctly, the signs are going to be changed to read "No Stopping" rather than "No Parking" in school areas, school zones, we'll call it. Is there going to be a loading zone, we'll call it, in front? Like, how do you, your kid just duck and roll out the door? There must be a stopping area. I'm just wondering how that's going to look.
Seeing no movement from Mr. Erickson, I'll wager a response. So the loading zone areas adjacent to each school, as well as the parking and the traffic control within that school property, we're suggesting no changes to that. What we've seen intermittently is changes between "No Parking" and "No Stopping", and in locations where we don't want people stopping, we're going to take that down and change it from "No Parking" to "No Stopping". So with the tender that's out right now, there's no change to any of the loading zones or school zones serving each school.
Okay. I think that answers what I'm looking for. Just so, I had some people question me that how are the, you know, how are the kids going to get dropped off if there's no stopping there? But if there is still loading zones and loading and unloading zones, that will be helpful. So thank you for that. And then if you could just, you had mentioned at the start of your presentation, it was approximately $300,000 coming from sidewalks, you said. And I'm wondering if you could explain what the $300,000 would go towards that would be coming out of the sidewalks budget, please.
Thank you for the question. There's some more detail with respect to the finances of the project on page six, Financial Implications. $300,000 from sidewalks, to clarify, that's within the sidewalk replacement project that we've awarded to North Star. $300,000 of those sidewalk replacements will occur within the school zones. So that will include 39 pedestrian ramps as well, extended deficiencies and locations where we would like to improve the sidewalk. The big one is the 39 pedestrian ramps.
Okay. Thank you for that. We had, again, had received calls and a little bit of confusion regarding the funding and where it was coming from and what it was for. So this helps to clarify that the $300,000 taken out of the sidewalks budget is indeed for sidewalks and not for signage. We've had so many people that called, I think, I believe we're all in the same situation up here, that so many people have called and said, you know, "How could it cost $5 million or $500,000 for these signs?" When in fact, it's $500,000 and $300,000 of that is for sidewalk work within the school zone. So I'm glad you pointed that out, and thank you for that. Does that include, in that budget allowance, is there crosswalk painting as well? Or is that removed from another budget line item somewhere else?
Crosswalk painting is covered operationally. There's no contemplated increase or decrease to that operational cost. We are updating crosswalk painting across the board to be in line with the municipal uniform, the manual of Uniform Traffic Device Control Manual. So worded in a much less confusing way, we're bringing those up to conformity with standard and regulation. So there is no operational cost contemplated, whether it's a decrease or an increase to Public Works.
Okay. I think I would sooner speak to the Park Superpass than that title again. So thank you for that. Lastly, I think, yeah, it was just a 200, you said approximately 200,000 per signage, and that was round about 700 signs, I believe you had mentioned earlier. Is that correct?
Yes. That tender, I believe it has just over 700 signs. Around 100 of them are to be provided to Public Works for other operational matters, specific to Safe Routes to School. It's approximately 600 signs. 120 of them are in relation to the 30-kilometer-an-hour speed zone. So the replacement of the 600 signs within the school zones has an estimated cost of $200,000.
Thank you. And is that labor-inclusive of that amount? Or is that just to supply the signs, and now we have to hire someone to put them in?
That's for supply and install.
Great, thank you. And that's sign pulls if required? This is a package deal to get it all done?
That's correct.
Good. Thank you. I think that answers everything I have. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Counsel Blau.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I have a couple of questions. The crosswalks are going to be repainted, but are they going to be looked after at a regular basis? Because, I mean, unfortunately, sometimes, you know, we paint something and then we leave it for longer periods of time, and they get faded and whatnot. So will they be looked at on a regular basis every few years or every year?
So crosswalks are the, some of the first line painting that we do get done in Public Works. And, I mean, operationally, this project wouldn't seek to change the timeline of those, of that work that's being done by Public Works. So we'll be bringing the crossings to a standard. However, we haven't discussed improving our line painting scheme and what that might cost at this time. There are opportunities for improvements on the operational side as well. There's things that I think we could be doing on the capital side to leave things either in a more permanent way for our operations staff or to leave indicators or markings to make it easier for our operating staff. But at this time, that level of service is being discussed with this project.
And in the report, just on crosswalks, it says a lot of the schools have indicated that there's a lack of crosswalks. They felt that they need more. And I don't know if that's a good thing or bad, because you could have students walking everywhere then. But is that going to be, is that part of the report to be looked at, to maybe adding additional crosswalks in certain locations?
How those corridors will be improved ultimately is through the 39 pedestrian ramps at the right locations and the appropriate markings at those locations. So with that, we're not looking to increase or decrease corridors for students to cross. We're just looking to bring the speeds down, make signage consistent, and have consistent crossings. I think there's locations where you might assume that a crossing would be, or it's a desire trail, a location where we know that people are using it. How we want to effect and control that is to better define these corridors and these crossings through the signage, through the markings, and through the ramps.
Okay, thank you. My last question, I don't know if you can answer it, might have to be Staff Sergeant Lewis. I know that the chief had commented that there's going to be a grace period, you know, when the signs come into effect on September 1 or whatever it is. But what about the speed camera that's located at 746 Caribou Street West? Will that be a grace period there too? Or is that, because that's kind of out of our control a little bit?
It's a good question. I would think, sorry, and that's something I actually hadn't considered. Great question. But I would, it would be our intention to implement or make a change there with that camera in relation to what we would determine to be our hard start-up for enforcement at the new, that new limit. Currently, right now, based on, our intention would be based on the actual implementation of, or the installation, rather, of the signage that September 1 or the first day of school would be a hard start date for us to begin a full enforcement, provided that the install is, there's been a sufficient grace period before that install. I would, again, without knowing the exact installation times or periods, our hope would be that they would be installed. We'd have that period of grace before that, and that by the school start of September 3 of 2024, we would be fully enforcing the new, the new speed limits there. Those cameras at that time would be in effect at that time would be our intention.
Thank you. And just in closing, just a comment. I'm looking forward to this, particularly some of the no-stopping. Twice in the last probably three weeks or four weeks, coming down Caribou in front of William Grayson, there's cars parked within less than half a meter away from the crosswalk, and the children are walking out, you cannot see them. And twice, I mean, I'm only, I am very cautious there because of that location. So, matter of fact, just today, I was only doing about maybe 5, 6 kilometers an hour, and a child stepped out. And you don't have time to stop. So I'm looking forward to some changes in the stopping rules in the school zones. Thank you.
Yeah. If I might offer a response to that, Chair. So the project will never be perfect. There will be outliers. There will be situations that were beyond what we have defined as school zone and things that we'll have to do operationally after it's implemented. At the same time, this is going to change use for schools. We acknowledge that. So we have, I don't know if we've sent them, but we are continuing to communicate with the schools on a direct, on a direct level with each administrator of that school. And we will work with the schools to figure out what areas we need to change and work with them, including how they have their onsite traffic. And that's something that, you know, as the people are doing this change, that's our responsibility. So we'll work with the schools to manage some of the unexpected byproducts of the project.
Chair. Counsel Eby.
Thank you. Really interesting going through the paper report that you gave us and looking at the pictures of all of the different signs that we have throughout the city of Moose Jaw. They're all different. And I look forward to consistent and standardized signs. I think that will make things really a lot more clear for everyone, and it'll look better as well. And just remind me, were we told there was one school zone that had a whole, I don't remember the number, of U-turn signs? I had a number in my head, but I hate to say it in case it's wrong.
The one, thank you, the one that is jumping out is the school that has 12 no-U-turn signs attached to whatever, whatever object could be found at that time.
That was the number I remembered in my head, and I thought, that cannot be correct. But thank you for, so, you know, when people are thinking, "Oh, we don't really need to do this", yes, we do, for sure. And, you know, over the last couple of weeks since we first talked about this, I wasn't sure, 40, 30, 40. I just, I was having a hard time landing on it and did a little reading about other jurisdictions. And I do think it's the right thing to reduce the speed zone or speed limit in the school zones. And so many people said to me, "Well, we haven't had any problems", and that's great. But I would not want to be sitting here making the decision based on the fact that we've had, if there was something that happened this week or next week, and then we were like, trying to catch up and saying, "Well, let's change it now so that doesn't happen again." So I think this is okay. And I've heard, well, it was Counsel Logan. I wish Counsel Logan would tell the story about how many more seconds it takes to go through the school zone, because it's not my story to tell. But anyways, I'm comfortable now with reducing speed. I was not certain at the beginning of seeing these reports, but reading it and talking to people and thinking it through, I am comfortable with it. And really looking forward to cleaning up all these ridiculous signs that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Eby. Counsel Froze.
Thank you, Chair. Well, this has been, this has been a really enlightening process to go through, I think, this with all of the different reports. And I think we've done a good job with getting public feedback on this and engaging with the schools. You know, SGI has endorsed this as well, which I think is, which is really good, too. But I think really what we have here is the changes to this bylaw, which I think there's about 18 or 19 really specific things, is clarity and that will make it easier for people to comply, which ultimately leads to safer, safer streets. And that, you know, having multiple different signs everywhere, it doesn't help with our citizens trying to figure out what they're supposed to comply with. It doesn't help our officers trying to figure out how they make the compliance actually work when the signs aren't clear. So I think it really just adds to the clarity and the safety of our city and that. So I'm really happy to see us moving forward. I mean, there's national studies and national endorsement on changing the speed limit to 30 kilometers. I've driven through a few of the school zones during drop-off and pickup times just to see what that's like in different areas of our city. And I think anything to help make things safer for children is a plus. Just because we don't have any incidents don't mean that there isn't near misses or scary moments for parents and for kids in these areas and that. So I think, I think this is a really important, really important bylaw amendment that we're going through here. And I know a couple of years ago, and it's come up again, talking about our downtown core, because we did have a request a couple of years ago about lowering the speed limits, and we had a report back from that. And maybe somewhere along the line, if they want to bring that forward, that might be something we could consider, too, and maybe open up that. That was a couple of years ago when we decided on that. But our streets are busier, and our downtown core is certainly busy and that. And just making things safer ultimately is the goal here. So I think, I think we're succeeding. But as we, as the Director of Engineering said, as we go through this process and start putting up the signs and that, there's going to be a few tweaks in that here and there as we get feedback continually on this. So, yeah, so I appreciate that input as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Froze. Meritoli.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. I'm supportive of the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week at 30 kilometers per hour. It seems it's easy to remember for everybody. And I like to think we have the ability to be a little bit patient as we're cautious in these school and playground zones. And I think this is a good move. I have a question about another part of this bylaw. 10.1, it's on page 15 of the report. It talks about the movement of vehicles to accommodate street repairs, snow removal, street sweeping, or other street maintenance. And it's appropriate right now because street cleaning is taking place. We're putting out the information that, "Don't park on this street for the, on this block. It's going to be cleaned tomorrow", kind of thing. Or there's a couple of days' notice that's been given. Then I look on the bylaw, Section 10.1, under the fines for parking and non-moving offenses. And I'm assuming that if you park where it's been signs put up, it's the same as parking on a barricaded street. And there's columns A, $50, columns B, $30, and column C, $20. And I'm wondering, Chair, through you to the administration, is that the amount of the fine? And why is there three columns? And also, what about the towing cost to move these vehicles for street sweeping or snow removal? What would those costs be, and are they added to the fine?
Thank you. Administration?
Thank you for the question. The three tiers are related to the repayment timeline. It's within the bylaw, but, so that's why there's three tiers that are within the repayment timeline. The bylaw amendment changes to allow for short move towing for operational purposes is the first step in allowing us to do that. And there are a number of operational things we need to look into between this bylaw and performing that work in the field. So it's a step. It doesn't mean that we will have the connection to a tow company and have that process dialed in right away. But this does give us that allowance and will help us operationally perform that work.
Could I ask a supplemental question, then? Certainly. Even if, so voluntary, you pay it early, you pay 20. Take a little while longer, you pay 30. Take too long, you pay 50. That's not even close to the cost of moving a vehicle. I'm wondering if we've got an opportunity to revisit this and add in the towing cost or something. Secondly, with this kind of bylaw enforcement, are we actively, are bylaw officers looking for these infractions? Or are staff reporting it to a bylaw officer? Or are they reporting it to the police? Or do the police actively look for these? Or are these simply complaint-driven?
I'd like to, I'll give the operational answer, and then perhaps Director Svensson's got more to say on towing, as we do have a related bylaw that's at some point as well. As long as the locations are marked appropriately, the call then can go from operations to bylaw, who can issue tickets in accordance with our existing bylaw. So that's a process that can occur. I don't know at this time how many have been issued around city operations for this year.
Chair, the reason I bring this up is on my drive to City Hall over the winter, there was a car parked in the same spot for six months with a pile of snow a foot high on top of it. And there's a trailer parked near my home that's been there for more than six months. It's on blocks. And so I don't want to be a tattletale and be calling somebody. But I was just wondering how it is enforced? How, are people and our bylaw officers looking for this, or police looking for this?
Chair, if you wouldn't mind hearing from me, I'll offer a little bit more information. So police enforce parking through the commissioners that they employ. So parking offenses typically would be enforced by them. And bylaw infraction in large measure outside of kind of the areas where we have parking meters and parking zones where you're required to pay for that parking would be typically a complaints-driven basis. There's not an active effort to go out and seek those that are not complying with every bylaw and enforce it. But we receive complaints and respond to those in that manner. In relation to the issue of towing, the schedule that you're referring to is not referring to 10.1, but the infraction of 10, sub-1 and sub-2. And so those are the fees that would be associated with parking in that manner, contrary to the bylaw. If we were to tow, we recently passed a towing bylaw that gets into more detail on what costs would then be passed on to the person that's being towed. And it would be in that, that we would capture the costs of towing. So there's a little bit of those working in conjunction with one another.
Thank you, Chair. Anybody else? Nobody in the speaking queue? Counsel Eby.
Thank you. I'm going to move that proposed bylaw number 5717, Traffic Bylaw Amendment 2024-1, be considered for all three readings at the next regular meeting of City Council.
Seeing no further speakers, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. That is all we have for the open portion of our executive committee. Could I call on Counsel Blanc?
Thank you, Chair. I would move that the executive committee close the meeting to the public and proceed in camera pursuant to Section 94-2 of the Cities Act, as confidential information is contained within one or more of the exemptions in Part III of the Local Authority Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, in particular Sections 15, 18, and 21.
Thank you, Counsel Blanc. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. We'll close.